Hello and welcome, everybody. This is Megan Cassell with AAUW. We're going to give people just a moment to filter into the room, and then I will start with introducing our speaker this evening. Thank you all for joining us tonight. For those of you just jumping in, we do want to let everybody know that we are recording this session, and we will make the recording available on the website and email that back out to everyone after the session. Looks like we've got a good number of people who are joined so far, so let's get started this evening. Welcome, everybody, to our presentation about school boards, the battleground for the education culture wars. My name is Megan Cassell. I am the Senior Director of Policy and Member Advocacy with A U W National Office. And I'm really happy to introduce Kathy Harper, who will be doing our presentation tonight. Kathy is a member of the Association Public Policy Committee. And prior to that, she's been the Director of Public Policy with the California State Board, a position that she held for six years. Kathy actually has a very long history outside of A U W as well, and it really brings a lot to this conversation. Kathy was actually a prosecutor in the Orange County District Attorney's Office for 25 years. She's been an adjunct law professor. She's argued in front of the California Supreme Court. It is dear to my heart that Kathy was the CEO of DOVBS, which is a domestic violence shelter program in Big Bear. And she did that for 10 years. She's received numerous awards for her work in the DEA's office. She's been recognized as a woman of distinction from the Orange County Board of Supervisors and a number of other honors. She's currently spending a lot of time with A U W, but also spending her retirement in Cambria with her husband Bob. So when she's not enjoying retirement, she's still very focused on public policy with A U W's issues. And A U W California has really done a lot in this arena. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathy and let her take it from here.
Thank you so much, Megan. And I want to start by welcoming all of you and saying how kind of I'm kind of torn by such a huge audience. I'm really glad to have you all here, and I'm honored to have an opportunity to speak to you about this important subject. But I'm kind of disheartened that this subject is so problematic for so many people. And I'm assuming that's what's inspired your decision to join us tonight. And as we're going to see as we go through this presentation, we do have a big problem. As they said in music, man, there's trouble right here in River City. And River City, the problem was the kids. But in our case, it's not the kids, it's the grownups. So sorry, Megan, my slide is not advancing.
That is
There we go. There, yeah, I don't know if my button was stuck or what.
So Kathy, I will just add, there is a Q and A function. Since this is a large session, we really don't have the microphones off to have it as an open conversation. But please do include questions in the chat. I'll respond to some of them. And then I will read them out to Kathy at the end so that we can have a bit of a dialogue. And as I mentioned, we will be recording this and sharing both the recording and a resource document out afterwards. So Kathy, with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Perfect. Thanks so much. I just put this up here so you can see my, get my contact information. So at the conclusion, or you know, at some point, if questions occur to you that you didn't think of to ask tonight, feel free to email me and we can chat about what we're doing here in California. All right, so this is what we're going to be covering as we go through the presentation this evening. We're going to talk about what is the issue? What is the problem here? What is the scope of the problem? We're going to take a look at what's happening both nationally, and then we're going to look at some individual states that are seen to be having the biggest issues. And then finally, we're going to talk about, I label it, how one A U W state board is fighting back. And that's my A U W state board, the A U W California. I'm going to tell you about a project that we have put together called the School Board Project. And in the course of that, we're going to talk about why are we even doing this? Why does this matter to A U W? How has it become an A U W project? And then what is the authority for some of the things that I'm going to be asking you to think about getting involved in ways that you might be able to participate? So first of all, let's take a look and see just what the problem or the issue is. Here's what we know. Organizations across the US are supporting candidates for school board races who advocate, and I call this the triumvirate of our problem. So they want policies that lead to the removal of what they call objectionable books from school libraries, policies leading to the censorship of what they call objectionable curriculum from school classrooms, and policies leading to the lack of a safe space for students with what they consider to be objectionable sexual identities. So it's easy to shorthand this. And even in my title slide, I have a stack of books with censor. To think about this is book banning, but it's really so much more than that. And in California, as you'll find out, book banning really isn't even the issue. Stuck again. Come on. There we go. So I like to start off with a smile because we have very, very serious things and unhappy things to be talking about. So I like cartoons. So here we are, braylude to another round of banning. And I like this cartoon because it says, "Warning: Your thought may be provoked." And I certainly hope that this presentation provokes some thoughts for you. And I also threw in here a fun fact. The first book banning is not new. The first book banned in the United States was called The New English Canon by Thomas Morton. He published this in, or tried to publish it in 1637. But the Puritans who were in charge at the time refused. They had control of the publishing presses, and they refused to publish it because Morton was critical of their treatment of the Native Americans. So the more things change, the more they stay the same, sometimes, huh? So here's just a snapshot. So sometimes we say the headlines tell the story. Here's a snapshot of just some random headlines that I came across that address each one of the legs of our triumvirate. So the first one comes from Florida. It says that 350-plus books were banned in Florida school districts since July. That would have been July of '22. And this was written in April of 2023. So just in that span, 350. That has skyrocketed up, and I do have some updates on those numbers in just a few minutes. In Texas, the Texas Senate passed a bill removing Martin Luther King and any information or teaching about suffrage from their required curriculum. And for the third leg of our triumvirate, we have a headline that tells us that nine states have bills banning restroom use by gender identity, and 19 states have bills banning participating in sports by gender identity. So let's talk about, first about book banning. And if you remember the title slide, it said, the title is, "School Boards: The Next Battleground for the Culture Wars." I'm going to be talking toward the end of this presentation almost exclusively about school boards. But I do recognize that there are a lot of states, a lot of you out there from states where legislation has been passed that basically ties the hands of some of your school boards. So I do want to talk a little bit about what's happening legislatively as well. It's not just, I know some of you, your school boards would like to do more, and some of your school boards are actually fighting back. And it's your legislatures that are the problem. So let's see what's going on from legislation. So here's book bans by the numbers. These numbers were got up through August of 2023. Statistics are always a little bit behind because they have to be gathered and then they have to be published. So what we knew as of then was that books were being banned, already being banned in 21 states. Those involve 66 different school districts. And Penn America, which is a great, I have a link and a resource list that Megan's going to give you later. I think she's going to put that in the chat or somehow you'll get a hold of that resource list. But it has a reference for Penn America. They're a great organization that is all about education, and they have a lot of really good information on this subject. So they tell us that as of that survey, they found that three, they found 3,362 instances of books banned in public schools in the 2022 to '23 school year. And that was a 33% increase over the previous year. So it's not getting any better, folks. So here's a look at some specific states, what we call the top 10, wholesale bans and vague legislation. So we know that legislation causes 31% of book bans in the last six months of 2022. And those were primarily focused in Florida, Utah, Missouri, and Texas. I don't have Texas up there, but it should be. So here's just a kind of a quick look at all of the top 10 states and where this is happening. So if you're from one of these states and you weren't aware that it's happening in your state, and I'm sure you all are, I'm sorry if you find yourself on this list of top 10. So that's what's going on with book bans. As far as curriculum censorship, this is a report from the ACLU. And they report that since January of 2021, 10 states have passed classroom censorship laws regulating discussions about race, gender, sexuality, and systemic inequality. Among these is Oklahoma, where a diverse group of students and educators filed a lawsuit against the state for its classroom censorship. And that bill is HB 1775. Texas, Tennessee, Idaho, New Hampshire have all passed similar classroom censorship bills in 2021. In 2022 alone, we've seen 26 new states introduce similar censorship bills. And then finally, for our third leg, the policies that are adverse to the interests of our LGBTQ+ students. We have outing laws in all of these states. And I've given you the bill number for your state. So if you're on this list, I'm sorry for you. And you can take a look at this list and find your bill and look it up and see what it says. But basically, all of these have the same thing in common, and that's that they have laws requiring parental notification if a student identifies other than their biological sex. So here's a question. How did this all get started? I'm sure many of you heard of this organization. They're called Moms for Liberty. And Moms for Liberty started in, where else, Florida. And they started about four years ago. And their initial purpose was started by two moms. And they were against masking and mandatory COVID vaccinations. And so they started talking to other moms and formed this very kind of loose coalition at the time to object to school boards about masking and vaccines. And their movement started growing across Florida. And it got to where it was a pretty well-funded and well-structured organization. So then COVID is not, I won't say cured, of course, but it starts tapering off. The national emergency aspect of COVID starts tapering off. And Moms for Liberty looks around and says, you know, we've got this great organization. We've put all this energy and resources into this. We've got a lot of support. It would be a shame to let it die. So now what do we do? So they decided then to turn their attention to book banning and curriculum censorship and anti-LGBTQ student activities. So here's a piece that tells us that since their founding in 2020, its influence over local and national Republican politics has grown exponentially. I'm going to stop there. This is not a partisan advertisement. I'm not against Republicans. This is a factual, a piece of factual information. And it's important because what's happening is there's a lot of money in politics from both parties on both sides. But it just so happens that the Republican Party has kind of thrown in league with Moms for Liberty and given them a lot of space to spread their message, given them resources. They've supplied money and other kinds of backing. So it is an issue that we need to be aware of. Since its inception, it's now a nationwide movement with 260 chapters. It claims to be a grassroots group that works to protect students and defend parents' rights. And this is an interesting designation that is used by all of these groups. I have written an article on the so-called parental rights movement for our state's branch newsletters. And there is a link to that article in the resources guide that I mentioned earlier. So if you want to get some more information on that, you can take a look at that article. Okay, so the members are leading the charge on book banning campaigns across the country. And the group says it has helped install 275 of its favorite candidates on school boards in 2022 alone. So this is what has captured our desire to get fired up and to do something about this here in California. This is where we've decided to really focus our energy is on what's going on on these school boards. It's near and dear to my heart because the very, very first chapter of Moms for Liberty that was established in California was established right here in my county. So it's a big issue to me. So here's just a couple of snapshots, again, to show the influence and the confluence between Moms for Liberty and the Republican Party. We see on the left, this woman is one of the co-founders of Moms for Liberty. And she was recently appointed by the governor in Florida to be on a state commission on ethics. The other snapshot is from the Moms for Liberty convention. And all of these Republican candidates, all of them are still candidates, but they were at the time. They all were on the agenda for that conference, and they all appeared and asked for Moms for Liberty's endorsement. All right, so that's kind of a national thumbnail sketch of the scope of the problem, what's really going on. Let's take a look now at some of your individual states and get a little more specifics about the problem. So in Florida, I think we're all pretty much aware that there's a lot of activity going on down there. We have the parental rights, again, this name called Parental Rights in Education, euphemistically known as the "Don't Say Gay" law. And here's the four bullet points, takeaways from that legislation. It prohibits public schools from having classroom discussion or giving classroom instruction about sexual orientation or gender identity from kindergarten through third grade. It prohibits public schools from adopting procedures or student support forms that maintain the confidentiality of a disclosure by a student, including the gender identity or sexual orientation of a student from their parents. It requires public schools to bear all the costs of lawsuits filed by aggrieved parents. And what research is actually showing that it isn't always the parents who are aggrieved or who are voicing grievances. Many times, it's someone from Moms for Liberty who will file a complaint, who maybe doesn't even have children in that school district. But once the lawsuit is filed, the school, the school district has to bear the costs of fighting that lawsuit. And finally, teachers who violate these laws could have their teaching certification revoked. So as you can imagine, it's put a real strain on the teaching profession in the state of Florida. Another bill worth noting is Senate Bill 266. It says that university curriculum must be reviewed for material that is based on theories that, either one of these two theories, that systematic racism, sexism, oppression, and privilege are inherent in the institutions of the United States. And two, or two, that the theory was created to maintain social, political, and economic, that, I'm sorry, were created to maintain social, political, and economic inequities. One of the responses, there's been many, but one of the responses to these kinds of bills came from the Florida Education Association, which reported that these laws have resulted in sustained chaos in public schools, as you might imagine. Let's look at the state of Missouri. We have Senate Bill 775. This law was designed initially to protect sexual assault survivors. However, it was amended to include a provision making it a misdemeanor for librarians or teachers to provide, quote, "explicit sexual material," unquote, to a student. And I suppose that's like a famous Supreme Court justice once said, "I can't describe what pornography is, but I know it when I see it." So as you can imagine, this is kind of nebulous. It's left up to libraries and teachers to try to guess what might be included in explicit sexual material. It says explicit means any visual depiction of a range of physical attributes or acts. Hundreds of books were removed for fear of criminal punishment because, as I said, not knowing really what would be or wouldn't be included, just remove them all, and then you don't have to worry about it. Another tidbit about Missouri, oh, this is, Missouri is also, no, I'm sorry. It was Florida, meant to mention that earlier, sorry. Florida, by the way, is where you might have heard or read that they banned the dictionary. One county, Escambia County in Florida, banned the dictionary because it had sexually explicit definitions of sexual acts. But back to Missouri. This is an ever-changing, ever-evolving subject. I get 20 emails a day from people who are concerned or sending me things that they've just read. Just this morning, a new one came in from an organization called Substack. And they reported that in a message posted on Twitter on February 6, "Valentina Gomez, a candidate running for Missouri Secretary of State, stands poised with a flamethrower in her hands. The text introducing the video explains precisely what viewers will witness were she to be elected." Quote, she says, "I will burn all books that are grooming, indoctrinating, and sexualizing our children." MAGA in capital letters, "America First." And of course, the two books that she's shown burning both have to do LGBTQ information for teens. Utah has what they call the Sensitive Materials in School Act. This prohibits certain sensitive instructional materials in public schools. The Attorney General's guidance mandated that school districts, quote, "immediately remove books from school libraries that are categorically defined as pornography under state statute." In Virginia, a library director, was, a library director resigned in Fort Royal, where county board supervisors withheld 75% of the library's budget, quote, "to protect our children from sexually explicit material and ensure parents have control over their children's reading choices." Which, a little editorial aside here, the irony of all of this is that parents who don't want to prohibit their children's reading choices are left with no control over their children's reading choices. And finally, I'm going to let you see what's going on here in my state in California. We have over here on the left, we have very, very contentious school board meetings these days. Unfortunately, this left one is a scene outside in the parking lot of a Glendale Unified School District Board of Education meeting. It got so bad that the police had to be called in. Same thing with another one of our southern districts. Temecula School Board meeting erupts in chaos, forcing law enforcement to step in. And here, the battle, here's what the battle was about. Temecula Valley School Board's recent meeting erupted in chaos with teachers screaming, and teachers and parents screaming at each other while discussing the board's previous month's decision to ban a social studies book that just talked about gay rights activist Harvey Milk. A very, very prominent conservative group in that city, in Temecula Valley, wanted all of, all those references stricken from school books in Temecula High Schools. So with all of that gloom and doom, I thought you might be ready for some good news. A few things are happening. Some people are fighting back, not just here in California, but in other states as well. In June of 2023, Illinois passed the first state bill to prevent book bans. In Iowa, a federal judge blocked the enforcement of a book ban. These last three stats are thanks to Megan. She let me know what's going on on a national level. "Ban Books Week," to be pronounced for September, has congressional support. Jamie Raskin and Senator Brian Schatz have reintroduced a resolution recognizing "Ban Books Week" and introduced the "Fight Book Bans Act." In June, the White House announced a set of actions designed to protect LGBTQIA+ communities, including the appointment of a new coordinator within the Department of Education to spearhead a response to the rising number of book bans at the state level. So we really look forward to seeing what comes out of that. And then lastly, we are, we're expecting, we have been and continue to expect, the final Title IX rules. And one of the things that they're addressing, we hope that they're supposed to be addressing, is some of these issues around our LGBTQ, and particularly our transgender students in our schools. And we're hoping that the new rules will provide some clarity for their protection. All right, so all of this leaves us with feelings of what the heck can we do? We don't, you know, we don't want to present this in a way that makes everyone feel, oh, my gosh, the sky is falling. It is kind of. But sometimes when we think the sky is falling, it can make us feel helpless, like there's nothing we can do. And in fact, as an organization with all of our members in all of our states across the nation, there are things that we can do. So if you're in a state that has already passed regressive laws or have such laws pending, number one thing you can do is put pressure on your legislators. Laws can always be changed. They can be amended, they can be rescinded. Put pressure on your legislators. Let them know that not everyone in your state agrees with what they're doing. Contact your representative. Write letters to the editor of your local newspapers. Support opposition legislation. Write letters to other policymakers and influencers. And I'm going to give you an example of that. In Florida, A U W Florida, I'm not sure if it came from just the Public Policy Committee, if it came from the board, but they sent a letter to the Board of Governors voicing their concerns about a proposed regulation prohibiting expenditures supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives at Florida's public colleges and universities. So this is a way that they decided to take action about something that was pending, where they really still had a voice. There's a copy, there's a link to that letter that we have included in the resource guide with their permission. And you can use that as a good example of something concrete that you can do to try to exert some influence over these policymakers. And you can join coil form, I should have said form, or join if there's already existing coalitions, if there aren't form one. I'm going to be talking in just a few minutes about what a great, successful strategy that has been for one of our, two of our branches here in California. But it's a great way, there are strength in numbers. And so find, seek out and find other organizations or groups in your area or your state who are doing, who have the same Uh, who have the same concerns and who are, who want to do the same kind of work and find ways to work together. To present a united front to all, to all, any and all of these policymakers. If you're fortunate, fortunate enough to be a state like mine in California that already has protective laws. My advice to you is don't get complacent. The, as here, our focus is on our local school boards. There's a lot happening there and there's a lot that you could do. And one of the main things you can do is make sure if you have protective laws, make sure that your school boards are following those laws. Because not all of them do, many of them will push the envelope and see how far they can go. Or they will, they, some of them will, may blatantly disobey the law, just daring the state to do something about it. So make sure you're aware of what's happening at your school board level and um, form strategies for fighting back like we have. So that's what we're gonna talk about now, how our state of California is fighting back. As I said, we're one of the fortunate ones. We were able to get a law signed just last fall in September of twenty-three, AB ten seventy-eight. And I put this language in here because I love it and I, and I want it to give, give some of you heart. Um, and if you're, if you're having difficulties with your legislature, you don't yet have a repressive bill. But you want to kind of do something to prevent getting one, um. Maybe you can use this as a model. Our, our bill was um, formulated on this introduction. We believe that California supports accurate and inclusive education. The California Constitution guarantees pupils equal protection under the law. California schools have an obligation to combat bias against pupils within their schools. And accurate and inclusive education are essential to ensure the educational success of all pupils. We all believe that, right? We all want our legislators to put those thoughts into action. AB ten seven, with that in mind, AB ten seventy-eight requires all school districts to have sufficient instructional materials for all students that align with approved content standards. It adds to the list of included topics that already exist in social scientists textbooks, says that those textbooks must include. The role and contributions of people of all genders, Latino Americans, LGBTQ plus Americans. And members of all other ethnic, cultural, religious and socio-economic status groups. It prohibits the governing members of school districts from refusing to approve or prohibiting, prohibiting the use of any book. Or instructional material on the basis that it contains inclusive and diverse perspectives. And finally, and this is the best part, uh, it gives teeth. A lot of our bills don't always have teeth. It just says, we'd like it if you would do this. But our bill actually reduces a school, threatens to reduce a school district's funding formula allocation. If the district does not provide sufficient instructional materials to comply with these provisions. So it's a pretty good law. Yeah, pretty good. It's a great law. Uh, I'll brag a little bit. It, um, but it only addresses um. Curriculum materials in schools and uh, you know, so you can, book bans and, and censorship of curriculum, the first two legs of our triumvirate. Um, so as I said, we can't afford to get complacent even though we have this wonderful law. Here's a headline out of one of our local papers, GOP Seeking Power in State Schools. Reports that conservative, conservatives are targeting boards and policies across California in the name of parental rights, which I addressed earlier. And this article tells us that Assembly Member Bill Saleev of. One of our cities here introduces a bill requiring school just districts to inform parents that their children use a different gender identity at school from the sex on their birth certificate. That bill failed, so our state conservatives tried to do it legislatively because we have a very strong opposition legislature. That bill didn't go anywhere, so what did they do? As I have highlighted here, he reports that we are now shifting our focus to quote, shape school boards up and down the state. So this is why we have decided to take our battle to, to the school boards. Um, and this group is also backing these parents' rights groups who oppose legislation just to do things like making it a misdemeanor to harass or threaten the school official. Or allowing the school to find school districts that refuse to adopt a diversity curriculum. Or give teachers training and cultural competency on LGBTQ plus issues. So these groups are, are opposing all of these legislative fixes. And this is a perfect segue then into the heart of, real heart of this presentation. I'm gonna talk to you now about what we're doing here in California to prevent the push. To elect school board members who support these policies. So what we're finding is groups like Moms for Liberty. That with, they have a very strong infrastructure, they have a lot of uh, support and a lot of resources. And they are out there and they are actively seeking candidates who agree with their values to run for school boards. And they're, they're challenging uh, good, solid incumbents in districts across the state. I know it surprises a lot of people thinking that we're a pure blue state. We're a majority blue state, but we have a lot of rural, rural districts, a lot of rural pockets in our state. And those uh, districts have, those uh, districts have school boards who are pushing the limits. So what does the landscape uh, look like here? Um. This is what, let's see. Okay, so this is what we're doing to uh, to push back on this. Our board has authorized the formation of this, of our subcommittee, uh, the State Public Policy Committee Subcommittee called the School Board Project. And what they originally charged us with is four things, assess the extent of the issue in California. We wanted to know, is it really a problem here? We weren't sure. Um, and we knew a couple, you know, individual members were fired up about it, but is it really an issue and where and where uh, is it an issue? What is the extent of our membership concern over the issue? Is it just a few isolated members or is everybody charged up about this? Assess the extent of membership willingness to participate. If we launch this kind of project. Um, we want to make sure that we knew that our membership was going to be behind us, that they, we had enough members to participate to make it worthwhile. And then finally, our charge was after that assessment was completed to provide the Public Policy Committee and our state board with recommended courses of action. So here's a snapshot of the results of our, the survey that we did. That was our very first uh, part of our mandate. And um, we have a hundred and nineteen branches in California. We got ninety-two distinct replies from sixty-seven branches. So and some of our branches had maybe both the public policy chair and the president weighed in or several. Members weighed in, that's why those numbers are different. But the important one is it sixty-seven branches. So that was more than half of our branches. That told us right there. That this is a big issue in California and there's a lot of concern. Um, in some, many, probably most projects that we do, uh, we, we're lucky if we get about a thirty-five, thirty-eight percent of response. So to have a fifty-six percent response uh, was a pretty big deal. Those branches represented ninety-five different school districts. So we asked, is this a current issue in your state? So we had um, twenty-four of those sixty-seven said that they were aware that it was a current issue. Another thirty-seven felt that it was possibly or likely to become an issue in their district. And uh, sixty-seven out of sixty-seven responses said, yes, they wanted to be, they wanted to participate, they wanted to be involved, they wanted to do something about it. So based on the results of that survey, here were our recommended courses of action. Um, that we encourage members to identify potential candidates within their districts. And to submit their names to their assigned liaison. So we have five members on our subcommittee. And we each took ten districts within uh, within our state. And each one of those members is assigned to be a liaison to those branches. And so, so our first ask was get out there and find, you know, mom, Moms for Liberty are finding and, and pushing candidates. We need to be doing the same. Go out and see if you can identify potential candidates in your district. Let us know who they are. Um, and then it was our intention that a member from our subcommittee would uh, then uh, submit that name to an organization that we were working with at the time. Called Equality California. Um, who had offered to provide training and financial support for any candidates that we fed them. That has proven not to work out. Um, that's one of our not successes of our project because we found out after the fact. That they would only support candidates who themselves were LGBTQ. So uh, we wanted to be broader than that. We wanted, our, our first priority was a good, solid candidate. Who was going to be able to do uh, the best work on behalf of our students. So be, their sexual orientation was not as critical to us as it was to Equality California. Um. Then, once a candidate was accepted for our project, the third course of action was to encourage members to support their campaigns. Um, so we were asking them to endorse, if we have a candidate, if we, we have an identified candidate in your district. We're asking your branch board to endorse that candidate. Then to help us introduce that candidate to the community, uh, do some meet and greets, find other ways to get the word out about the candidate. Through flyers, social media and to volunteer to work on the campaign in different ways now. Many of you are maybe drawing back in horror and saying, wait, what are you talking about? We're A U W, we're nonpartisan, we can't do that stuff. We're, we're nonpartisan. Many of our members continue to think we're non-political, which we're not, but we are nonpartisan, but I will address all of that in just a minute. Um, and then finally, uh, we want to encourage members to attend and speak out at school board meetings. And then report back to their liaison what's going on in the school boards. So I went back up just for a minute and talk about, again. So we've given our members all of these things to go out there and do. Natural questions, well, why are we even doing this? Why are we involved? So here's, here's what I find is the answer. The research finds that approximately forty-one percent of banned book, banned works feature LGBTQ themes. Um, or main characters or significant supporting characters. Characters of color make up forty percent of the main or significant secondary characters. About twenty-one percent of the titles deal with racial and racist topics. So you might see a theme going on here. As to what's being singled out for uh, censorship. So I turn to our A U W public policy priorities for an answer of what that, why it's that significant to us. We've stated that A U W believes that high-quality public education is the foundation of a democratic society and the key to improving economic prosperity and gender equality. We support academic freedom, civic education, protection from censorship and bias-free education. All of the things that we've been talking to go completely against that, excuse me, that statement of our values. So that's why we're involved. Alright, so what is our authority to, for this involvement? Can we really go out there? Can we recruit and endorse candidates? The answer is yes, we can. And here's where you find it. In A U W Policies and Procedures three oh one, it addresses candidates for public office. It says endorsement of candidates for nonpartisan elective office. Now, this may not be true in all of your states. It is certainly true in our state and you'd want to find out, of course, before you engage in any of this. Um, but in our state, all of our school boards are nonpartisan elective offices. A nonpartisan elective office is an office for which party affiliation does not appear on the ballot next to their candidate's name. So they don't run as a Democrat or Republican, they just run as a school board candidate. So once you've identified that they are nonpartisan, um, uh, PP three oh one tells us that A U W affiliates with a five oh one C four status. Which is the majority of affiliates, particularly in our state, may recruit or endorse candidates for nonpartisan elective offices. So there was your authority for number one, our number one ask, recruit and number two ask, endorse. There are two caveats with this. The same uh, policy directive tells us that affiliates that have independently incorporated themselves as five oh one C three entities. May not endorse candidates for any kind of elective, elected office. So that includes nonpartisan offices. There are other things you can do if your branch is a five oh one C three, but you cannot uh, endorse, you cannot recruit. And there are some campaign activities that you can't engage in. And then the other caveat is that before endorsing candidates for nonpartisan elective office, A U W state affiliate organizations must carefully investigate state and local election laws. Where state or local election law considers endorsement itself a contribution. A U W affiliates cannot endorse for any elective office partisan or nonpartisan. Our state code in California, we're fine because it says that contribution, an endorsement is not considered a contribution. But you need to do that research and uh, discover for yourself with the laws in your state. Um, the, the policy also addresses affiliates contributions, says um, A U W affiliates may not contribute money. Mailing lists or anything of material value to candidates for any elective office partisan or nonpartisan. I think it's pretty given that none of us would ever consider giving them money. Mailing lists, however, we all have a mailing list complete with phone numbers and addresses and. Uh, email addresses of all of our, the members in our states. I'm assuming most of you state public policy chairs have that. Um, we certainly do. That cannot be shared. That would be a major ask probably of, once you've identified a candidate, probably the first thing they'll ask you is, well, can I have your mailing list so that I can send? Uh, campaign material to all of your members. The answer is no, you cannot share that. Um, A U W affiliates may not collectively volunteer time for candidates' activities through an official A U W affiliate sponsored activity. So what this means is that, for instance, you couldn't go out um, to, if you have some uh, event going, some community event, you couldn't go out. And put up an A U W table with your A U W banner and all of your A U W shirts and stand there and pass out. Uh, campaign material um, on behalf of your chosen candidate. But your members can do that on an individual basis. It just can't be a collective group activity. Um, and then finally, A U W affiliates may not publish paid or unpaid partisan political announcements or advertisements. I highlighted this because this allow, this allows you, since these are nonpartisan um, uh, offices. This would allow you to put uh, an endorsement in, for instance, in your branch newsletter. It would allow you to do a social media campaign because it's a, it's a nonpartisan um, uh, office. You can, you can engage in that kind of political announcement or advertising. Alright, so that covers our first recommendation regarding candidates. Our second or, or final ask of our members was um, basically what it says here, step, step up and speak up. Go to your school board meetings and um, that's what I'm gonna talk about for the rest of this. This is a, for us in California, this is the most critical piece. So I subtitled this, What to Say and How to Say It. In California, we put together our A U W uh, Public Policy Committee through our, our um. School Board Project Subcommittee. We put together a toolkit for going to school board meetings. That toolkit, uh, link to that still kit will also, to that toolkit will also be found in the resource guide that you'll be uh, furnished with. And um, I'm just, I just asked Megan to include it in the resource list because if you're interested, if you're, if you're uh, on here from a. Uh, a state public policy committee or you're in charge of uh, state public policy in your state. Um, if you're interested, just, just go ahead and pull it up and take a look and see what kinds of, of things that we have in there. And feel free to copy anything that you think will be of value. We love spreading the word and why invent the wheel? We've already done a lot of this. So you might want to pull that up and uh, take a look at it. Um, but before we get to that, I want to give a shout out to one of our branches who is doing tremendous work. Um, they have formed a coalition with groups including the PTA, the League of Women Voters, P Flag, Stop Moms for Liberty. There's a, there's a lot more, but those are some of the major ones. And it all started here. This is a, a picture backs of some of our members, uh, and they even had T-shirts made. And they go to school board meetings together and they wear their T-shirts and they stand together. They show unity. To the school board members and they also show unity to people who are there from opposition groups. people who are there from opposition groups. In, in one of their first meetings where about nineteen of their members showed up, they told me that Moms for Liberty was so shocked at the overwhelming force of this other group of people, they actually called the police because they felt, they said they felt intimidated by this show of force, by all these people they had never seen before and didn't know. So these, this group is doing great work. They just held their first meeting last weekend, and they came away with four objectives. To educate the public, to train other groups, to support progressive candidates, and to develop connections with the school board, with the school community. And it all started right here at the school board meeting where they saw other speakers from other groups and went afterwards and talked to them and said, hey, I know that you share our values. We, we want to do something. How can we all come together and work together to do what's best on behalf of our students in our school districts? And the question is, did it work? The answer is, it does work. Here's what one school board member told one of our members from that group. We've been told, she said, we've been told by school district staff and board members that our AAU W's presence at Board of Education meetings has changed the tone of the public meetings and has been a factor in building community support for the district and encouraging current board members to run again. We're finding across our districts that our incumbents are so discouraged by the intimidation and the harassment and the name-calling and all of the ugliness that can take place at these school board meetings. They're just so discouraged, they don't want to run again. And this was so wonderful to hear that some of them have actually told our A W members, you've made us rethink that. You've made us see that there are people who support us and that maybe we really should stick this out. So it does work. So I just put here in the, in the toolkit, I have a long, long list of presentation tips. We worked on this with a member from the League of Women Voters, and they had put together a wonderful presentation on skills on school board, skills for beginner school board attendees. And I've taken them out here because they're very detailed, but they are in that toolkit. Again, you can go in there and take a look. And it's a great teaching tool for members of your state. If you want to copy it, please go right ahead. But here's just kind of a brief overview. What we wanted to do in our state with our presentation was to, to find a way to make our members not afraid because there is so much of this intimidation going place. We wanted to make sure that our members did not feel afraid to go to school board member meetings. We want to make sure that we gave them some essentials of, you know, to arm themselves, to be prepared. So just real quickly, be respectful, of course, of the board and of others in the room. Do not engage in shouting matches with members of the other side. If they want to engage, you just step away. That's not what we're there for. Present a united front, as I said, develop coalition partners. Remember, there's strength in numbers. Make sure you come prepared. Do your homework. Have a firm understanding of the issues. They may be different in your state. As I said, our focus now is on LGBTQ issues, but you may still have to, you may still be facing book bans and curriculum censorship. So whatever your issues are, make sure you understand them. Make sure you understand what the current laws are that affect that issue. And, and take some time to find out what your state education code says is the role of school boards. Part of our presentation to our members here in California was we actually educated them on what the role of school boards in California is, what, what school board members can do as well as what they can't do. And if they're doing what they can't do, then we ask our members as part of the speak out, part of stand up and speak out, we ask them to speak out, call them on it. You can't do that. And here's this code section that says you can't do that. It's helpful to give a brief introduction of A W, just kind of as your intro, just give a little bit of, of how our historical focus has been on improving education opportunities for all. This is also a great opportunity to get our name out there, to get, you know, get A W known to the community and to other, not just to the school community, but other members in the audience. And I can't forget, I forget what the other thing I was going to say. It'll probably come back. This is an important one. Acknowledge the good work the board is doing and has done, and emphasize the positive things that are happening in your district. This group that I showed you in the picture, as, as the quote said, that they, their presence changed the whole tone. And it's because they followed this rule number five. Talk about the board in positive terms. Here's the great things that are going in our district. Here's the things we would like to see be able to continue, but these things are being disrupted by these calls for book banning or, or policies that would do harm to our vulnerable students. But, but always phrase it in a positive way. Make sure that they know you're there to support them. State, then just state your support very professionally. Try to keep the emotion out. I mean, let them know that you're fired up. That's important. Make sure the passion's there. But keep it professional. State your support for or the opposition to agenda items and what your reasons are. And then if someone from the opposition has already spoken, you want to respond to their points. And then here again is just a brief list of the things that are in the school, in our school board project toolkit. There's a board presentation skills for beginners. That kind of covers the mechanics of what to expect when you go to a board meeting, you know, show up on time. Make sure you know where the timer is and how much time you're going to have, those kinds of things. Some tips for addressing the board in a way that will make sure that you are heard. We have some sample scripts in there that, or again, one of our members today, we just had another meeting, and she said they, they went to a board meeting and just having our sample script helped them so much because they didn't have to fumble around with what to say. Some tips for dealing with the opposition. And then techniques to diffuse a tense or escalating situation if, if that happens in your, at the meeting that you attend. So all of those things you can find in there as long, as, as along with all of the, the authority, the public, the policies and procedures that give you the authority. There's a whole bunch of good stuff in there, so I hope you'll take the time to look into that. And with that, I will now open it up to questions. And Megan, I think I'm going to turn that over to you. Is that right?
I am taking a look at quite a number of questions. There's really a lot, there are a lot of questions about the resources, so I do want to share with folks. Number one, do take a look at the Q and A. I have dropped in links to several of the resources, including the California School Board Project. So you'll see that link. We will also be sharing a pretty robust list of resources of information that Kathy has gone through. So that will be shared by Friday, so everybody will get that on. You'll get that by email. It will also be linked on our A W webinars page. And let's see. So some of the, some of the questions I think that apply to a lot of folks. That Kathy, when you're doing the presentations, or are you doing these presentations during, at a school board, during public participation? Or are you on the agenda? Because, and the person asking this has been a school board member, so she was commenting that many school boards have a limited amount of time that you can speak. There's only three minutes. So, so how have you navigated that as part of the school board project?
Yeah, we address all that in the toolkit. There's, there's about, it's about eight pages in the toolkit dedicated to speaking at school board meetings. And it addresses all of those points. I just want to emphasize that it might, it's, it's not only is it likely that there might be different rules in your state than from California, but even within California, just, there's different rules within our districts. So we always encourage members to check out your, your local school board and find out what their rules are and make sure that you adhere to them. Most of ours, some of ours have a two-minute limitation, most of them have three. But you can find out if there is already one of these, you can just go to their website and find out if one of these issues is already on their agenda. And then you can, in some instances, you can show up and then just register when you show up and say that you would like to speak and address that. You just have to have you fill out a little card with your name, and then you turn that in, and then when that item comes up, the clerk will call you. Other times, you, if you really, if you think there's something going on that you want to, to address this, then you can ask ahead of time to be put on, have the item put on the agenda. One of our members reported today, though, she said she was told by a school board member, we're not, she was in a good district, and she says, she's, we're not having any of these issues, and we really don't want it being brought up because it might stir up the pot. So that might be something to think about as well, but you know, if you're, if, if you anticipate these issues, you might want to get it put on the agenda just so you can get out there and be heard first.
And Kathy, I think a question that you've alluded to, which is really good to see is, how have you dealt with members who disagreed with this effort or disagreed with A W becoming so active in this?
The way I always deal with that, because it comes up for many of us frequently, is I, I go to the authority and I, I show them what I just showed you, Public Policy, Policies and Procedures, Section three oh one, and I let them know that, number one, this is, we do have the authority for this. This is what our organization, this is the official position of our organization. You are an affiliate member of this organization. Now, having said that, of course, we tell everybody, if you don't, if you're not comfortable with this, you don't have to participate. We're not, this isn't mandatory. We're all volunteers. If it's something that you don't agree with, you can certainly not participate. What we do emphasize though is that you can't go to that board meeting and say, well, I'm with A W and I disagree and I have a different position. No, that's not permissible. You can do that in your individual capacity, but not as a representative of A W. You are required to speak in, consistent with what our policies are. So, you know, that's, that might be a bigger question. I mean, there's a lot of issues that come up where our members might disagree with our official positions, but that's the general thing, as I always tell them. If you don't want to participate, you don't have to, but if you do, you have to be consistent with our, speak consistent with our values if you're representing our organization.
And thank you for sharing that because this, there are many political issues, our public policy issues that we may find disagreement within our, within our membership. And I know that our D E I committee last week talked about resources to help facilitate conversations within a branch and emphasizing civility, but how to have those conversations about diversity and inclusion, and that does include diversity of, of opinion on that, but yes, branches can't publicly be against. Kathy, I will say that there's, there's definitely some wonderful kudos, so it, there's a lot of appreciation for, for the information that you've been sharing. Taking a look at one of the other comments here, and you know, there's, somebody was asking in their state, in their city, they, they're not aware of any city, school boards being threatened. You mentioned some of the, the, some of the school boards have gotten feisty, for lack of a better word. And is, somebody's asking if there's a perceived benefit to speaking at the board meetings or through written correspondence to make sure that they're aware of the community's support, should they see a change?
Well, I think both are beneficial, but there are additional benefits to actually speaking up, attending the school board meeting. So we ask our members, we actually, and you'll see this in the toolkit, if it's something you might want to use as well. But for the purpose of our project, we, we're really strong on tracking what's going on. We want to make sure we have a central clearinghouse of everything that's happening in our state. So we ask them, we put together a checklist, and we ask, if you do go to a school board meeting, please take the checklist with you and complete it. And it asks things like, were, what was the issue? Were there opposition members who spoke for or against whatever the way the issue was framed? Who, who was, can you identify the name of the group? And then a, a whole series of things of, you know, did it, was it hostile? Was, did everyone behave professionally? So there's, there's a section on, on giving us information about who spoke and, and how they conducted themselves and what they spoke on. Then there's a section on the school board members. So how did the school board members reply? Did they follow the law? Did they stay in, in control of the meeting? Did they, were they hostile to our members? Were any of the school board members hostile or impolite or unprofessional when our members spoke? Those kinds of things are on that checklist. So we ask our members, if you're not comfortable in speaking up, at least go to the meetings and fill out these forms so that you could, we tell them you're our eyes and ears. So bring these forms back to us and then a copy to your liaison so we can track. And we can see where there might be problematic school board members incumbents who we might want to try to find a challenger for. And we also want to know where are the, the pockets where groups like Moms for Liberty, for instance, there are others, but they are the main one that, they're the most organized, so we talk about them a lot. But you know, where, how, what, what's going on in each of the different districts as far as, is that a really vocal, active chapter, or do they just show up and sit there? We want to know those kinds of things. So, so you can, you can help by just going and being there and being a presence. And when somebody says, you know, how many members are, how many, how many other A W members are here to support this position, you stand up. But if you're not comfortable speaking, writing a letter can be, can be effective, but I think certainly being there is much more effective.
And that is something else that we're, I'm seeing affirmed from people who've also been showing up not only for school boards, but for county commissioners as well. And one of the comments that's been shared is, show up, be articulate, be respectful, be specific, and about what are, what we care about. Exactly. I want to, Kathy, I want to thank you for all of the work that you've been doing in California and for sharing this, for A W California, sharing their school board project toolkit with, with other branches around the, around the country and for starting this conversation. And I will say, there are, there's a couple of other questions in the chat. We can follow up with folks after the, after the session is over. I do want to reiterate, we absolutely, we've recorded this session. We're going to make the recording available. We've got a resource, a list of all of the resources that Kathy has mentioned. We will both email those to you by Friday, and we'll have those up on the website for you as well. With that, before we close though, something that's
I just want to say, thank you, thank you, Megan. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to share what we're doing. Hopefully light a fire.
I, I see exactly that. I see a couple of fires that are being lit, lit in the conversation here in the chat. And I want to thank all of our members of the Association Public Policy Committee as well because I know that this is something that the entire committee has, has thought would be very beneficial. We're glad it's been well received. And this is the first of a number of conversations that we will be having this year, both to do a deeper dive on particular issues. And we will also, within the next couple of weeks, you'll see a training series on, for capacity building about things like candidate forums and what we can lean into with elections at every level, especially this year, having that, prompting that conversation. So look forward to that as well. Much more deeper dive on issues, what are great examples coming from the branches in the states, and more capacity building. But I want to thank everybody for their time tonight. I realize that no matter what time zone you're in, it's getting a little bit later. Really appreciate the time that everybody spent. And Kathy, thank you again for all of this and all the work that you've been spearheading in California.
Thank you so much.
Alright, with that, thank you and good night.
Good night.